Call the Loudoun City Council Meeting to order from May 20, 2019. This time our invocation will be led by Chief James Webb and our pledge by Master Jay- Major Jason Brown from Tennessee Air National Guard. Stand with him.
Let us pray. Most kindly gracious ever Father Lord, we come to you in prayer just thankful, Lord. We're thankful for all the blessings you bestowed upon us, our families and this community. Father, we just pray that you continue to bless us. Father, we just ask that the Holy Spirit will lead God direct us as we move throughout our lives and we pray that you be with us here in this meeting tonight. Father, we just pray with your wisdom that we will be able to make decisions and lead our community. And these sons ask in Jesus's name, amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, baby C. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thanks for coming to the monthly meeting of the Loudoun City Council. My name is Mayor Jeff Harrison. Happy to counsel and staff. I'm a welcome you here tonight. Tennessee law gives every Tennesseean the right to attend city council meetings and to observe how our government does their business. We appreciate that you've taken time out of your own personal schedules to be here tonight just to see how the city government works. You should have a copy of tonight's agenda. If you don't have one, there's one available at the back of the room on the table over there. That's a guide to what we'll be discussing tonight. In order to conduct efficient, businesslike meetings, the council has adopted specific rules to follow. Primarily, these rules are designed to keep the meeting moving, ensure that all points of views are heard, considered, and to provide for common courtesy. In a few minutes, we'll come to the place on the agenda entitled Citizens Input where anyone wishing to address the council will encourage you to do so. We do however ask that you wait until you've been recognized and after being recognized, please come to the podium, address the council. If you need assistance, we'd be happy to give you the assistance you need. Please observe three simple rules. At the beginning of the presentation, please state your name for the records. Please address all your questions to the mayor. Do not ask questions of the council members or staff. If necessary, the mayor will ask the council members or staff member to address your question or comment. Please avoid the use of improper language, profanity, or any other inappropriate conduct. Once that portion of the meeting is over, the council will proceed with the remainder of the agenda. You're welcome to stay, observe the meeting, but be advised that public comments will be limited. We ask that everyone remember we're doing the people's business here tonight, which adds a very important responsibility to all of us here. Please help us do this business by observing these rules that we've established. Again, we welcome you to our meeting tonight. Glad everybody took the time to come. With that, we'll open up with the next item on the agenda is Citizens Input. It's the time when anyone who wants to address the council, if you're encouraged to do so, please come to the podium, state your name for the records.
I'm Don Kestrel. I don't really have much more to say than what we said a couple of weeks ago. I'm here to represent along with other neighbors and green acres to discuss the situation we have there and as of right now, it isn't approved. We don't know. I've heard some input from other people, but don't know where we're going or what's been done if anything, or we're basically here to try and find out some information. Because the situation is not going to get any better and I don't think it's any better than something like that.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Don. Thank you back there in the back. Someone stood up.
I've just got a request. I don't know where you folks have seen me, but we've got a problem with bugs big time in Loudoun. They're tearing trash up. They're all over our planet. There are probably five to six hundred of them nesting on the island. I've been doing a little research and I understand that the city can get the permit to get rid of some of them. You just won't have to do anything if you get the permit. We'll take care of the bug. But we need something done because I've got some bug address where they just tore the trash up all over Church Street and down Popper Street. They tear it, they get in the trash. Bear said he was looking in from the police station down over there rolling in there. They're all over that entire. And that's all I've got is a request that you guys get us a permit. You won't have to do anything else because we'll get rid of the bug.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Anyone else? Just come up, state your name, please.
Hi, Abby Markolli. And I, along with Don, live in Green Acres. And I'm just kind of curious as to still what is going to happen with the electric fence. You know, the property that was put there behind us, it's still up, it's still on. I'm not sure if that is allowed or if it's just being tolerated. I'm not sure. But I would also like to see that addressed, the electric fence to come down because like a gentleman that came with us last time said, there is a substantial amount of electric fence up on that property and there's nothing to keep any, you know, children from getting shot. I'd just like to see that also addressed with what else you guys had to add to that.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I don't have any problems with June 1st. I'll have completed a little over 11 months being the interim president of the chamber. And I wanted to thank this council as well as the previous one for all the support they gave the chamber, getting us moved into the new building and also the attitude of the community led by both city councils. So I wanted to just not ask for anything, but thank you.
Well, thank you, Clay. We appreciate your work and the interim basis. Anyone else need to address council? Come forward and state your name.
Well, I'm the neighbor everybody's talking about. And the electric fence-
What's that your name, B?
Patrick Talby. I live at 1631 Gale Street, Loudoun, Tennessee, zip code 3777. Don't be tough on them.
Don't need that.
The fence, if teenagers don't know, if he don't want a electric fence next to it, he just got a smaller area that he can put up his home property fence behind me and his electric, the electric fence won't be on you or near you. Get my- I got one next to John Houston. All of those left. I have. Have you heard any complaints about John Houston? About him? I've been harassed. I've had the police department, fire department there yesterday on page and the policeman left and said, there's nothing to this. And the fire department waved and went on. I have been stomped and kicked on the whole corner fence at my house. I cut two trees down and I had a woman come in my house and jump on me over it and knock me down. And I did get up and get a boot or an ice cream because I had just got out of a wheelchair. 617. You want my boot pressure pill? I've been to hospital twice on account of Ryan jumping on me. He stumped my feet and toes because I was trying to put my corner line in down there next to the highway at my light post. And then the next thing, he sprayed paint in my face when I was in UT Hospital in intensive care for four days. I got all the medical records right there with me if you want to see. I got six bottles of blood pressure pills that he caused me to go on. My heart's bad now on account of that, they say. I got the medical records of all of this that's going on and my son is putting up 25 cameras in there. Every time a policeman or anybody comes up, kid's going to Texas and he's been documented by a man up there writing everything down that's happening to me down there. There's a camera on every inch of that property. Sure, I will not be harassed no more like you because the UT Hospital told me when they released me, said I need to get a pistol and strap on my shoulder. The next time around, come over there to be sure him and me weren't, that I didn't die here. Now before they released me. And I got the medical records and you can talk to the doctors and everything that you think. I got the medicine right there with me, the medical records. And I got my deed to my property for I cut them two trees down behind him. He said that them was his private trees, them was my two trees, him and Murray's. I did. I set every one of them out because Murray's property, down there, I set all his trees out and then John his three trees. I will not take no more harassment now. I would go to court for it. I would take anymore. Everything's been documented in Texas, not here. Them cameras all goes to Texas. There's 25 of them in that, on that property. Brewster seen them today. They're in there. I'm not monitoring from Texas. Because they said they want to, they're documenting every one of my medical records right now, all my medicine. They're talking to UT and everything. Because they said I couldn't take much more.
Okay. Thank you, Patrick.
And I got that heart record that if they want a private fence up away from my left end, let them put up a small one there. I done spent $45,000 on a fence. You know what $45,000 cost me to take care of the one around the swim and doing the other? Right now, having a pressure washer and stain every three years, if you know, if they got down with that and my old mill there. $7,000 some dollars, that pressure washer and stain now.
Thank you, Patrick.
So if anybody wants a private fence, he can put up a small one.
Anyone else want to address them?
Yeah, oh, plenty. Just be patient. Go ahead.
My name's Marion Martin. I live in Green Acres, next to the- And the animals, there's so many animals and the smell and everything. We don't live on agriculture. We live in the subdivision. And we're wanting the animals gone, you know, because we pay taxes for subdivision, not agriculture. We're on a farm. If I wouldn't be on a farm, I'd go on a farm, just like he could. He has run the subdivision there, you know, with his plastic fence up and part of it fence and wiring everywhere. And they, can anything be done with the city ordinance to stop any animals? You have to have so much land before you can have farm animals.
We do not have that ordinance at this time.
I know, but it can be done, right?
I think Joe's got some-
Turn it over to Attorney Ford.
And Chris, can we do Joe a little bit?
He got a little bit. It's likely that we can't make an ordinance that goes backwards. Can't create a law now that punishes conduct that happened in the past. So it's not likely that this can be fixed by ordinance, but there is a lawsuit that can be brought to abate and nuisance is what the lawsuit is called. And I know that a couple of the council people have consulted with Chris Fry about the possibility of what that lawsuit would look like if Travis Gray decided that there were violations against the permit in existence now for Mr. Talby. And I know that's being looked into. So that's where we stand legally on that issue right now. Is that your understanding, Councilman Brewster?
Yes.
Just gonna take that.
Thank you, Ms. Martin.
Ron Martin. I'm not good at this, but be patient with me. It all started because Patrick would not, he didn't come over to the house and say, well, I'm gonna have this survey and see where my property is. I don't want no property in that area. I told him that from the very beginning. But he cut the two trees down and it really upset me and Marion because I love the trees and they's a good barrier between properties. But no, he went on his own and just whacked them down and didn't care about what we thought on any of it. And as far as harassment, you've never seen two people harass us like he does. We're 75 years old. We can't, we're not supposed to take shit like this, pardon me, but I do apologize. Danny is the sneakiest one human I believe I've ever seen in my life. He gets in the trees and puts the flashlight in our bedroom. And if I ever catch him in my yard, he mows on the opposite side of the fence. I try my best not to throw grass over because he fuss about so much. I don't, I don't throw grass over. It's a lot more if somebody does it, I can't help that. But I'm gonna mow up against my, up against the property that he claims. As far as Ryan, that you couldn't ask for a better son law. He would not hurt nobody. And two police officers there when Patrick was accusing him, they didn't see nothing. He put three, he put six iron poles in the ground and wanted me to hit them when, before the fence went up. I told Ryan to go out there and spray the top of them, they were black. I said, spray the top of them blue where I can see them and I was gonna mow. Well, he got all the way to the very end and that's when Mr. Patrick ran out there and started screaming and hollering and going on like some nut. And I told, I told, he hollered and he sprayed paint in his face. He didn't spray, they was two officers there. He didn't, he didn't spray nothing on his face. Patrick is a pathetic liar. He harasses me and Marion constantly. They got mirrors, all this other stuff. I mean, he might be a bad health, but that's not my responsibility, you know? How can you be in that big a house and get some ladders and cuss their bushes and trees and haul them to, and burn them? Oh my gosh, he had a fire yesterday that would absolutely blow your mind. So I told Ryan, I said, find the police. And he said, I can't get a hold of nobody. I said, well, the police said call them. So he called them. The fire department, the police come out and I don't know what they said to them because it didn't go out. I don't want to talk to them. I don't want to talk to them ever. And they left and Danny went and got more brush and put on the fire. Now how about that? I don't understand, I don't understand what they're trying to do. I can live beside somebody and be just as nice as I may and not have to worry about them, but they, they torture you, you know? It's just, it's pathetic. And he sprays this much on my property to kill the grass. I'm sorry, I'm third.
Thank you, Ron. One more time.
The electric fence is, I don't feel like I should have to put up a barrier. I don't feel like it should be allowed in the city limits to begin with. There are small children in that subdivision. And yes, regarding his blood pressure, if anyone is making his blood pressure go up, it is himself. I have seen him cuss every city cop that we have. You cannot talk to this man. You cannot even approach him about any concern you have because you get retaliation regardless. I don't care how nice you are, you will get some sort of retaliation. They have eight lights down one side of their property. So when someone said, please detach from my fence, they moved the pole down. We now have a nine-foot light and there were mirrors below it. It is, and which I know you cannot do anything about that, but there are things that can be done. And I know we as a subdivision expect something to be done. The electric fence, I feel like it's just being tolerated. And you know, when someone gets hurt or a little child gets out there and gets shot, and it is on, it's on. And I, I mean, I feel like if, maybe if you lived directly behind them like we did, you would actually see him climbing the trees, sitting in the ladders. I know people that had blood pressure problems. They're not out there trimming 20-foot trees. They're in the house behaving themselves. So as far as the harassment, everyone has tried to leave them alone and it just keeps persisting and persisting. So we want you guys to step in and do what you can do.
Thank you. Anyone else? One last round, Patrick.
Those trees Ronnie was talking about, they're talking about wasn't my two trees. The trees behind Ronnie, I set out. I paid for them. They never did pay me for it. But those two trees is on my property and I cut them down between them and me. And he expects me, I was gonna put a private fence up because he cuts me down because I had the electric fence up there so I could get private. Why can't he put it up between me and him? Because I done spending that, I ain't spending no more. My son in Houston said he wasn't spending no more money because he's gonna use all of it for all this security system that he's got there documenting on all of it. And he's got a picture of them trying to tear it down the other night.
Okay.
They took. It was for them.
Okay, we're gonna move on in our agenda. Thank y'all for coming and voicing your concerns. I think as Attorney Ford shared the legal matters, where it stands legally, we'll continue with that. Approve of the minutes? I think those were mailed out to everyone. Everyone have a chance to review the minutes. Any questions about the minutes? Any corrections or?
A message from Mr. Fry. The minutes appear accurate.
We have a motion to approve the minutes?
A motion to proceed and file.
Okay. Houseman Dixon, second. All those in favor say aye. Any opposition? Motion carries. Next we have the fuel bid. Does it look like Rogers Petroleum? Is that correct? Manager Ross?
Yes, the fuel bids were received and a low bid, purchase of fuel on May 2nd, 2019, came from Rogers Petroleum. The projected amount is $16,827.50.
Okay, you want to have any questions about that? No, I'm gonna take a motion to approve the fuel bid.
I'll make a motion to approve the fuel bid. I'll second.
Councilman Dixon, Councilman James, thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And then we have, next item on the agenda is Blair Ben Paving.
Yes, Mr. Merrick. As we went over in our workshop, there were three different bids received for the Blair Ben Road Repaving Project. The low bidder was APAC Atlanta Inc., which is a Knoxville-based company. The low bid was $846,504.86. Two other bids were $50,000 and $60,000 more expensive respectively. This can be approved by motion of the council.
Okay. Make a motion.
Councilman Brewster, make some motion. We have a second.
I'll second.
Next, Councilman Dixon, anyone else have a question? All those in favor approving this motion, say aye.
Aye.
And the opposition? Next item on the agenda is ordinance on second reading. We had public hearings concerning these topics earlier. Ms. McCollum, we need to take all this separately against?
Okay.
First one is to approve the amendment 10 to the intergovernment agreement continuing the planning and community development department. This is what we have with the county, which is $25,000 a year for that service. Any questions about that? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve it.
So I move.
Okay, second.
I'll second.
Okay. Councilman Brewster. Can I ask for a roll call vote?
Second.
Councilman James, second.
Councilmember Brewster?
Aye.
Councilmember James?
Aye.
Councilmember Bibbin?
Aye.
Councilmember Dixon?
Aye.
Mayor Merrick?
Aye. Second ordinance we need to approve is amending the 2018-2019 fiscal year budget. I think you have that included in your packet. Any questions about the amendment? $18,000. No, I'll ask for a motion.
I'll move.
Councilman Brewster made a motion. That's second.
I'll second.
Next, Councilman James. Can we roll a call vote, please?
Councilmember Brewster?
Aye.
Councilmember James?
Aye.
Councilmember Bibbin?
Aye.
Councilmember Dixon?
Aye.
Mayor Harris?
Aye. Last ordinance on second reading is comprehensive revision to the personnel rules and regulations. Also had a public hearing concerning that and that was, the revision was to section 2.3, which was the residency requirements. We've talked about that in workshops and looked at it. I think that was the only change. I'm gonna have to, any questions about that? Approving the personnel rules and regulations?
This is just one.
One item. Any questions about that? I guess the motion is to add that to the agenda. No, I'll ask for a motion to approve that revision.
I'll make a motion to approve that compromise, the personnel rules and regulations.
Okay. Councilman Dixon made a motion. That's second.
I have a question before we do that. Though I'd lust to count on that we were approving the, the new personnel rules and regulations. So are we back to just adding that now? Because I thought we were under the full, that we were approving the, the new personnel rules and regulations, the whole policy. So it was a lot more different than just the-
That one section.
That one section.
I'd like to recollect, Manager Ross?
Yes, this is a, it's not, it's not one provision, it's an entire packet that the, it's a packet that was distributed to you. I would direct your attention to the table of contents, you know, it covers employment, equal employment policies, drug and alcohol policies, pay classification plan, overtime, insurance benefits, vacation, holidays, time off benefits, training and educational assistance, resignation and retirement, layoff and recalls, well, says civil service procedure. There are minor changes and edits, one of which is the residency clause. And this newer version provides flexibility and in certain instances, specifically the instance of our public works directive. Other changes, and I'll just, just note highlights, is a change to the training and educational assistance. Currently, there's no limit for college tuition assistance for city employees. We look to the city of Knoxville as, as general guidance in the region and we cap that at $3,000 per year. It is to be conducted under a plan. It's approved by management and department staff for that particular employee and it's tied to 80% of state college tuition rates.
And this mirrors what was proposed before the Loudoun utility. It's one in one policy and procedure right now. They're a little different.
Right. So basically what we're-
I just wanted to clarify that it wasn't just that one change.
What we're, what we're voting on is the entire personnel rules and regulations with that provision that was mentioned.
It's revision on top of the-
With, that's included in there. So I want to, you can still say with your motion to approve the-
I'll still say with the motion.
Okay. So we have a second to accept the personnel rules and regulations as submitted?
Aye.
Okay, Councilman Brewster, second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dixon?
Aye.
Councilmember Brewster?
Aye.
Councilmember Bibbin?
Aye.
Councilmember James?
Aye.
Mayor Harris?
Aye. All those passed on second reading. Some ordinance on first reading, including the packet and ordinance of the city of Loudoun documenting the annual budget for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2019 and ending June 30th, 2020. Manager Ross, you have?
Yes, included in your packet is a summary of the budget and what I'd like to do is share that with the- to do is share that with the audience now. This is, we are on fiscal year budget, so each summer, and we really, we get started on, on these budgets in, in January, to be truthful, but we generally work on these in the spring. This budget is, this budget draft is a little bit tardy because we've had some distractions this spring, not the least of which was the courthouse fire. However, we quickly caught up on our budget process, and we're pleased with the positive feedback and strong direction provided by our elected officials in the past two city council workshops, including the special called Budget Workshop this past Wednesday. We thank you for your feedback on our draft budget, and we especially appreciate your suggested edits and additions. After taking your comments into consideration, we can now present for first reading tonight, a revised budget with the following highlights. There is new spending for infrastructure and paving. The budget includes two point six million dollars of spending on infrastructure and equipment, seventy-six percent of which is for long overdue paving. Over a decade has passed since the great recession. During said decade, save rather than spend attitude shaped many budgets and deferred spending on infrastructure and maintenance. As we enter the year 2020, a clear vision has been established that is now, that is now the time to invest in necessary infrastructure and maintenance. In support of this effort, we have budgeted over two million dollars towards paving this fiscal year. The paving push will be supported by a six penny addition to the city property tax rate. That totals a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in revenue. We will leverage that along with almost eight hundred thousand dollars in state grant aid and four hundred thousand dollars from L U B, Loudon Utility Sewer Department, for crosscuts and, and pavement cutting that was done in, in repair of our sewer system. Our park system will benefit from this paving program through the paving of parking lots in Loudon Municipal Park. Those parking lots are currently gravel. In support of continued maintenance and to provide additional workload capacity to the public works department, the budget includes funding for the addition of a skilled laborer to the department staff. Next budget highlight is public safety. While smooth streets and well-maintained public buildings is easy to notice and appreciate, of equal importance is the maintenance of what cannot be easily seen or noticed. A problem exists that the radios currently used by our firefighters and police officers cannot send and receive signal inside the most important buildings in our city. These buildings include the schools where our children learn and the industrial and commercial plants where our citizens work. We cannot and should not allow these blind spots to exist. The budget includes seventy-five thousand dollars for the purchase of radio equipment to solve this problem and to bolster public safety. The budget also includes funding for an additional patrol officer to equalize the number of patrol officers across all three shifts. Next, the budget includes support for the downtown waterfront redevelopment. In order to make Loudon, Loudon's downtown waterfront a destination and to support Loudon Utilities' redevelopment of the Hutch property, the budget allocates one hundred thousand dollars of courthouse square funds for the preliminary engineering and federal permitting of a riverwalk. Loudon's riverwalk will ultimately join the courthouse square, the water fountain, and the water tower as one of Loudon's most notable landmark attractions. Next budget highlight is the fact that employee salary and benefits will be supported. Included in the budget is an updated funding formula that strengthens our self-funded health benefit plan. Also included is a two percent increase in salaries and wages. In addition, this budget includes the following grant projects. One point two million for improved traffic signalization, a hundred percent of which is reimbursed by the state of Tennessee. Hundred forty-two thousand dollars for Quinter Road right-of-way acquisition and completion of construction bidding. One hundred and twenty-eight thousand of that will be reimbursed. And last but not least, this budget contemplates a reduction in service, a reduction in what would have normally been spent on commercial garbage pickup. An ordinance to cease that activity must be presented to you, this council, for a separate vote.
Thank you, Manager Ross. As he read off the highlights, I want to thank the council as well for collaborative effort. Took a long meeting on Wednesday, but I think we had some good feedback, good ideas, and I think we accomplished quite a bit with our budget as part of the funding goals. Like paving and maintenance and some of those things was priorities, and I think we addressed those. Okay, so I'll ask for a motion on first reading for the ordinance to adopt the annual budget fiscal year twenty nine, July 1st, 2019, and ending June 30th, 2020.
I'll make that one.
Councilman Brewster made a motion. Have a second.
I'll second.
Councilman Dixon made the second. Can I ask for a roll call vote?
Councilmember Brewster?
Aye.
Councilmember Dixon?
Aye.
Councilmember Bibbins?
Hi.
Councilmember James?
Aye.
Mayor Harris?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is for the first reading, ordinance is setting the tax rate. As Manager Ross explained, there is a six cent tax rate included, which takes the V rate to, it's on the screen, that one dollar two, three, three, five, seven, I think it is. That is included in that, that's a six cent. So, we need a, a motion to set the tax rate. So, I'll ask for a motion, council for that.
I'll make that motion.
Councilman Brewster made a motion. We have a second.
I'll second.
Councilman Dixon, seconds. Any discussion? Can I ask for a roll call please?
Councilmember Brewster?
Aye.
Councilmember Dixon?
Aye.
Councilmember Bibbins?
Hi.
Councilmember James?
Aye.
Mayor Harris?
Aye.
Tax rate is seven first reading, that's that. Then the last item-
I'll talk a little bit about that. As far as voting for this tax increase, and it has to do with funding for street repairs, street pavement, infrastructure work, that money will be earmarked for debt only, and we will not be able to take that money out as long as this council is here to be able to use for any other purpose. It will only go for what we have said it would go for. I just want to make that clear with the budget. We also agreed that at the end of our term in two thousand twenty-two, we'll move to repeal the tax. At that particular time, we're going to vote to repeal it because we asked the election, you don't know who will be in there, and we all feel confident that we don't, we won't pass that tax on to somebody else. If they want to put it back in effect, they can vote to do it if we have a new, new regime. But I'm gonna, I'm gonna plan to repeal the tax and, and, I can make a motion and set term for two thousand twenty-two during the end of our tenure, repeal that tax at that point in time. And I feel like that most of the people I've talked to, they were for it. But the next question out of their mouth is, what happens when all the infrastructure is done and the improvements are through? Does this tax stay on? Well, I don't want it to stay on because if we're through, and we've done what we accomplished, want to accomplish what we've done, and with the tax money, then there are no need to keep taxing off. I just feel like we need to repeal it. And I spoke with my constituents, and then at least one of them, and they said he agreed with me, he felt like that it needed to be done. And I also talked, spoke with Ty Ross, our city manager, and he said that's what we had to be done. We couldn't make any kind of a contract that would guarantee that it would be repealed at the end of the period of time. He said it had to be done by us, the city council, that afforded and put it in motion, we have to take it out of motion.
Same way we put it in motion.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, any other comments about it? And next item for first reading is the permitting, designation of handicap parking at or near the intersection of Grove Street and Moore Street. You see those pictures in your packet? I did speak to the business owner of the diner, and as Councilman, Councilmember Bibbins pointed out, the one in front there is really narrow. They would prefer the one around the corner, option two, I think the second spot, and across the street at B B and T Bank.
Yes, it was a good discussion at the workshop, and our public works director, Ellis Strug, added this third additional spot with a third option you consider. And it's funny that this, this parking place has to be chosen by ordinance, just like the budget, but such are the rules.
Yep.
And, and what I would ask you to do is just, is frame, in, in your, in your, in your final decision, make the choice by, by selecting one of the three options on this map. The map will be attached come to the, to the, the language that's passed and for clarity.
She, she liked the option three because it could be van accessible, is that correct?
Yes, you take two spots, create one van.
Okay, which the others would not be able to have van accessible access.
And that would be across the street?
Yeah. If you're B B and T, that would be B B and T Bank.
And to my knowledge, we don't have any van accessibles in the city area.
Right. So, that would, that was a good, good suggestion someone made there. Look at that space. And I do know, speaking to the restaurant owners, they would prefer that instead of the one in front.
Leave the two in.
Okay, yes. Leave the two as regular.
So, in your second reading, which will come at your, at your June meeting, we will eliminate options one and two and go with option three. Is that correct?
Well, they, she would like to have two spaces, two and three.
Two and three.
Yes, just eliminate one, just eliminate option one. That would give them two spaces. Any discussion on that? I think it's, Manager Ross, we had some collaboration, make that some good ideas, suggestions.
That's what's possible for ideal.
Well, that, that's what a curve cut is, you've got a handicap inaccessible section of the sidewalk is.
Only other ones that you will be able to have, I think, would be across the street and down the long side where the, uh, that is, across the street from it.
And so, they're a little farther away.
Right, right.
So, what we're voting on in this first reading ordinance is options two and three.
I'll make a motion for option two and three.
Thank you, Councilman Brewster.
I'll second the motion.
Councilman James, any other question? Can I ask for a roll call vote?
Councilmember Brewster?
Aye.
Councilmember James?
Aye.
Councilmember Bibbins?
Hi.
Councilmember Dixon?
Aye.
Mayor Harris?
Aye.
So, we'll set public hearings for six fifteen, six twenty, and six twenty-five respectfully for all of us for second reading. Okay, next item on the agenda is department reports. Chief Brubaker, do you have anything to report?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Chief Webb, is he back there?
Just real quick, I'd just like to say that we don't have the Highway Eleven yard sale. We just put extra car, put an extra black mile up and down the highway, try to slow traffic down. And then for Saturday, you know, we had the farming market. And then today, along with the fire department, we had the privilege of escorting our Loudon High School baseball team, Loudon High School soccer team, and also the track team through town as they were going against Murphysburg from the spring flint. And so, we, we had the privilege, like I said, along with the fire department, the escort team through town in my car.
Thank you for that. Along with that, Chip wanted me to announce, that's a good lead-in, that the Redskins baseball is going to be broadcast live ninety-six point one, Magic one oh four. You didn't, I'll tell what time, just, I don't know what the times are.
The first one will be soccer tomorrow at two thirty. That's on the web only.
Okay, that's the Redskins soccer team, and then the Redskins track competes on Friday, and it'll be updated on the radio stations as far as times. Okay. Ellis, you have anything?
Yeah, just a couple things we've been working on. The new gas play system, which is the way we get fuel for our city and utility vehicles. There was a new system purchased about eight years ago. There were some complications of getting it installed back then, but last week we were able to get it installed. It is working actually pretty well, so.
Good.
Kind of big a topic for us. And then lastly, you notice the fountain's out of service. We're doing our annual, annual maintenance on the fountain. That includes the cert primary circulation pump and do some other things to it, so.
Get the coins out.
That's right.
Yeah. Mark, you have anything?
Yes, sir.
No.
Any other department here? Jason, anything? Okay. Manager Ross, I wondered, did you have anything?
Well, I was, I was expecting a visit late during the meeting from Jack Waltz. He's the director of our economic development agency. And so, I'll speak on his behalf on what he was able to brief me on this afternoon. And I placed on the screen for, for your review, I believe it's slot number six, in the Center Seventy-Five Industrial Park. He does have a, a prospect who would like to contract for the purchase of this property, and here he comes now.
As we enter into this, we'll pull ahead and ask Jack Waltz to come and podium.
Great timing, boy.
That's exactly. Manager Ross was just introducing you.
You nailed it, sir.
Thank you. Thank you for having me this evening. Before you have Lot Nine, which is in Center Seventy-Five Park, it's approximately twenty-six acres. Have a prospect that's looking to purchase this land. They are looking to start out with a warehouse, about fifty thousand square foot as the project, entail about fifteen jobs roughly. They also, during the first year, they're looking to construct another fifty thousand square foot facility. It also employed about fifty employees. The average wages on those are about sixteen dollars and eighty cents an hour. The other part that they would like to look at is a first rudder refusal on Lot Six. If you look just north of this piece of property, Lot Six currently is a thirty-two acre track. They don't want to purchase the whole property. They're only purchasing the first, it's fifteen acres if you look at the dividing mark there associated with the tree line. So, instead of purchasing the fifteen acres, we're actually looking to purchase thirteen acres, which would allow us to keep the two acres that has the billboard on it for revenue. The billboard currently generates about five thousand dollars annually in revenue. It goes into the coffer of the Center Seventy-Five Fund, and so we will continue to, to look at that. The first rudder refusal would be up until the second week of January, so pretty quick turnaround on that. What that second phase will look at is possibly two additional fifty thousand square foot facilities with fifty employees each. This is an automotive supplier. That's kind of where we're at with the, the project. Negotiation wise, we agreed to do an update on the phase one, which is approximately three thousand dollars. Those funds have come out of the Center Seventy-Five Fund. We currently have, there's eight thousand dollars budgeted in that account right now. Those funds are generated from the act leagues as well as the billboard annual revenue is generated. Other negotiation points we made was with updating the survey, the boundary survey, and also installing a hundred foot of roadway. We're asking the county commission to consider installing the hundred foot of roadway with the highway department. That would hopefully reduce some of the costs associated with that. We've also asked them to budget ten thousand dollars, up to ten thousand dollars, the like seventy-five, Center Seventy-Five Fund, that would allow for engineering. If you notice the way the, the road is currently, it doesn't line up with the intersection of the existing roadway. The buyer has agreed to install a, a box covert, if you will, to extend that existing covert over so we can line up this road so it'll be perfectly aligned across from the intersection, which will assist with traffic flow and future growth in this area. The first parcel, like I said, the purchase price is five hundred eighty thousand dollars. Second phase of, of the thirteen neighbors is about two hundred sixty-six thousand dollars.
You know, for competing with anyone else, you may not know that.
I, I don't know that at the time. I mean, we've been talking about this project for, I've been working with them in June, in June, it'll be one year. So, it's been, we've put some time.
Any questions?
They are looking at doing an NGO technical as part of the big diligence. It'll be a ninety day term, and I think we'll, I've already talked to Mr. James about the act leagues getting on that property and conducting that survey as part of the big diligence.
Encouraging. Thanks, Jack. That's your question on that.
One, one more question, and really it's a question for, for the entire council. Jack did tell me that his, his timeline is pressed on this project. He did need a county commission.
I just left the county commission. I tore up it. I apologize for being late.
And that was a workshop, and then they can then take it up at their regular meeting. But your next workshop isn't until the second week.
But your next workshop isn't until the second week of June, and what Mr. Falls and I were discussing was the possibility of you having a special call meeting before which day, what is the date?
The county commission is June 3rd. I would like to get the contract executed by June 4th, so I need to have a meeting sometime between now and June 3rd, if that's possible.
Okay, we could get together and schedule that.
The county attorneys are currently in the process of drafting the sales agreement along with the resolution for both parties.
Okay, we'll get together and schedule that, and then I'll hold the council.
I'm going to do that. Now, I believe that has to be properly upped.
That has to, yeah, I thought the same thing. Okay, thank you, Jack. Any other questions?
Appreciate you, Jack.
Thank you. Anything else, Manager Ross, you need to report on?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Councilmember Bibens, do you have anything that tracks you to talk about?
Yeah, a little bit. We are a step closer to getting you all a stakeholder's report from Sand Tech. Kind of a little hiccup point right now with them, so we'll see what they come back with, and then we'll go from there. So we are a step closer to that, so follow up on that, come on next week.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Brewster. Anything to report on?
Yeah, Mark and I met with the architect, Ben, who's, he's grown up some land for parts, great building, doing a dog park.
Lions Club.
Lions Club, we have. The smoking man, I think we hit him, got a hiccup on that. I think that our attorneys are saying we can't make a rule that is more strict than state, is that what you understood, Mark?
That's correct. I think he relayed the message to Manager Ross.
I talked to him today, he said that state law preempts us from making any rules in that regard, and he confirmed that with his ass.
So we couldn't implement anything stricter than state?
We've got to provide them a place.
That's what the state.
Inside the park. Does that include EC grants?
There's not a law against it. Joe, EC grants, can we start making him go to the designated area just by ordinance?
I'll have to, Chris, we have to look into that, too. It's been preempted by state law, and any kind of ordinance we ever proposed, we have to research that particular ordinance and coordinate with them to ask, so it's a hard topic to answer questions, you know, because each one will be, has this been preempted or not?
Okay, anything else, Councilman Brewster? Councilman Dixon, anything?
Well, the utility board workshop, as we, Mayor Bradshaw was there, he went over everything with, about the agreement with the utility board, with using the old city hall. And that was talked about a good way, and then brought to the city council.
I guess y'all will cover that in your next meeting.
Yeah, in our next meeting, it'll be more covered.
Presented.
I'm sure. And the bid for the Hutch building to be torn down will be in by the end of May. And then, of course, everybody knows that we're working on the Island Avenue. Island Avenue's messed up right now, will be messed up till October, I guess, but.
But actually go around it if you can?
If you can go around, they close the street off during the day, open it back up at night. So hopefully they'll be done by October, and we'll get it all paved, and it'll be nice new, and then they'll probably have to tear it up again. But the AMI meters, the new meters going in, the crews are working on those, looks good, they're on schedule and somewhat ahead of schedule, so they've almost got ready by done, and they'll be moving on from there, so hopefully we get those in by the end of the year also.
Thank you for that, David. Councilman James, you have anything?
I got a couple of things. I wanted to thank the codes enforcement people because we've had a ongoing problem on Carters Sheen Road. There's a lot grown up up there that was in terrible condition. And I don't know if the codes enforcement did it, or if they did it on their own, but it got cleaned up over the weekend, and everybody called me and thanked me, and I said I really had nothing to do with it. But they really appreciate it, and I want to say if they, if they did get the job done, they done a good job, yeah, I can tell you that. And the other thing is, I know we've kicked this situation around out in Greenacre, and Attorney Ford said that, and we can't, we can't make any resolution that's retroactive, we cannot. But we can do it for the future, for the, so it wouldn't happen again, so we won't be facing the problems that y'all are facing again. And I think we need to take action on that and do that. It's easy to stipulate that you've got to have at least an acre of ground that doesn't include your house, because I can, I did some research at Department of Agriculture over the week, since we had our workshop. And in the state of Tennessee, the Department of Agriculture recommends that for farming applications, grazing applications, not more than one adult animal, which is a 900,000 pound cow, okay, to an acre of property, that it can't maintain anymore with the back, see what I'm saying? And I know from being a farmer, I've got 300 acres, and I run about 120,000 cows, but that's all, all I can have, you know, run because of the fact that they have got to maintain a pasture and maintain themselves. And so that's why the acreage has a lot to do with it, you know, and we could do that, but no problem whatsoever. And there is one thing that was mentioned here tonight that I can tell you, that glared me, too, because I asked about electric fences, and electric fences, what the Department of Agriculture recognizes and what they put for any rule regulations. Electric fence is not illegal, they're not, but there is a code that says they have to be posted electric, high voltage, or current, and should be marked, well marked, in two or three visible places all the way around it. Now, if it's not, then it's not in code, I can tell you that, because it is, that is, Department of Agriculture requires that. You know, that's just, it's just a safety factor, is all it is. And I mean, on my farm, I've got a lot of it, probably two miles of it, and I put yellow ribbons on it every 100 feet or so, not because I'm going to get into it, because animals see it, and they won't, they don't tear it down, that's what it's for. But, you know, it's, there is ways that when we will work with it, we will try to see that this won't happen again. I mean, unfortunately, we didn't, you know, we didn't see it coming, you know.
Anything else? Councilman James? Anything? Just a couple of things, a few things I had since our last, I know, Manager Ross, myself, and even Jonathan Herman, we got to go to the UT Civil Engineering Students, and we got a presentation, which was very formal, but got a lot of good information there, they did for us, good class project there. Also, I'd mentioned about the suicide prevention training, we did have 15 attendees attend that, which was, we was pleased with that attendance. Also went to the East Tennessee Mayor's Caucus over at Denso in Meriville. I talked to the county mayor, their blunt county mayor, and you just don't know how these projects will turn out, just like EDA Director Waltz said, they're expecting to have 50 employees, that kind of thing. When Denso first come over there, they expected to have 100 employees, that was their plan, now they have 4,500 employees. So you just never know where these things will wind up, so that was a good, a good visit. We did hold our planning commission meetings, we had held them at the historic Loudon Theater, but next month they'll be here in this, in this facility. And I have to congratulate Mayor Bradshaw for winning the celebrity king cat fishing tournament, but I do want to thank Parks and Recreation Director Harold and Rachel Baker, Tourism Department, for doing it, a really good event, and it was a good brand community that weekend, so I want to thank them for their efforts on that.